Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started tonight. We're gonna start out with the invocation given by Pastor Dean Youngblood of the Potter's Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you very much. Everybody, Father, I just wanna thank you for this time together, Lord. I just ask, Lord, that you just, it says, "Any Magna like wisdom, let them ask," Lord. And today, Lord, we ask for wisdom and guidance, Lord God, to lead the city in the way that you've designed before us, Lord. I just ask that your plan be the will of this place and this city, Lord God, founded upon Christian values, Lord God. We thank you today. I ask you, everyone that sits behind this diocese, Lord, I ask you to bless them. Give them wisdom as well and strength to make the hard decisions that's before them today, Lord. We give you glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You know, before we get started, I wanna just kind of off of our, before we start our regular meeting, I just wanna say that we recently had our Swedish festival. I have had a lot of people reaching out to me, talking about how amazing it was, how it continues to improve every year. And so before we start, I just wanna say a special thanks to Councilmember Stacy Smith, her mother, Steve Sepharjan, June Hess, Chris Peterson, Greg Johnson, the people that really put that together. That means a lot to our town. And I've said it before, and I'll say it every time I can, I've seen Stacy out at 5:00 in the morning, chalking lines on the street before the Swedish festival. That's a commitment unlike most towns have, so thank you sincerely from everybody. I've had so many people come up to me, so I just wanna say sincerely, thank you. Okay, now we will call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Siller?
Present.
Councilmember Palomar?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Here.
Item two is to approve the agenda.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, presentations, we have none. Item four is public comment. This is a time for any citizen to come forward and address the City Council on any issue that's within our jurisdiction that's not listed on the council. There's gonna be a maximum of five minutes allowed for each speaker, and we like to give the disclaimer that for these items, we're not generally allowed to engage back and forth conversations, but we're here to listen. So if anybody would like to come and address the council, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item five, the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature to be placed on the consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action item listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recital readings, ordinances by titles only, and adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports. For this evening, we have consent calendar items 5.1 through 5.6. Are there any council members that would like to pull any items this evening? Is there any members of the public that would like to pull any of our consent calendar items today? Any members of staff? Okay, seeing none, we will entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we will move on to our regular calendar. Item 6.1 is a public hearing awarding of the competitive housing unit allocations for the residential development of 2024. Staff report prepared by the Community Development Director, Holly Owen.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Councilmembers. Holly Owen, Community Development Director. Before each tonight is a request to consider the recommendation of the City of Kingsburg Planning Commission recommending the award of allocations for a multifamily senior affordable housing project per the City of Kingsburg Municipal Codes, and that you adopt the resolution 2024-29, accepting the recommendation of the Planning Commission to award 25 multifamily housing units for the construction of 99 senior affordable housing units for the 2024 calendar year pursuant to the Kingsburg Growth Allocation Program. Just to review, for those who are not familiar with the growth management system, it was a charter amendment passed by the citizens in November of 2004. It was brought about by concerns about unplanned growth and perhaps growth that was not up to the Kingsburg city standards at the time, and they set forth a growth management system which provided for 115 units, housing units, per year, and of those, there were 80 single-family and 35 multi-families to be made available at the beginning of each calendar year. Now, they passed that resolution or that referendum, and then they didn't really necessarily have a process in place, so a future committee set aside a process to rate and rank applications. There was a self-ranking that was done with the applicants at first, and then there was an internal staff rating and ranking that would follow that, and then followed by a recommendation to both the Planning Commission and City Council. Number of criteria were considered, including the suitability of the location, whether or not they had services easily available, how close they were to the city, architectural design, and aesthetic considerations. So the Planning Commission has reviewed the rating and ranking, and it's based on a project as identified in that application for housing units. So if at some point in the future, the applicant wishes to increase the housing number of units, they would have to go back and apply for more allocations, but they are able to decrease units without going through that process again, should that be their business model. As the project is a multifamily unit project, it's going to go through the planned unit development process, which will be a Planning Commission hearing, and then they will also be required to obtain all required land use entitlements. It will require site plan review, so this project is a little ahead of itself at this point. They've not gone through site plan review yet, although they've been in conversation with staff for probably almost a year. The location is, as you can see in the map, is the site of the former Twin Palms Project. Some of you may have remembered that. That was also a senior housing project, and it's also adjacent to Nelson Hardware. So there's a vacant lot there, and that's where they plan to be. Now, the calculation of allocation units was a little different from what we usually see. Usually, we see one-to-one ratios, but because they have, we're not only a senior housing project that had specific amenities, but also affordable, they were able to get sort of credit for the housing units. So each housing unit received one quarter of an allocation unit. So that meant that they, you know, they were proposing 99 housing units altogether, and so they were requesting 25 housing units, which is in your packet. If you have questions about how that was determined, that's in the attachment B. We know that the project's going to be fairly high density. They're going to try to do some amenities, like a community garden. I think they'll be, they were talking about a dog park at one point. Those details are still in the works, but hopefully, they should be coming to us shortly with their final site plan to begin the site plan review process. That will follow the typical process, which will yield conditions of approval, and then they will be free to apply for building permits. The environmental review is that it's a, the award of those units here is that we're not doing an environmental assessment now on the project, but on the action of awarding allocations, and that is considered administrative action, so it's not subject to CEQA. Your policy alternatives is that you could choose not to award housing unit allocations at this time. With that, I think you have a fair amount in your attachments. If you've got any questions, again, you know, this isn't a review of the project. This is conceptual. It probably won't change a lot from this, but the devil will be in the details, and as soon as they submit their site plan review, then we'll know more, and we will be sure to keep you informed as appropriate. That concludes my staff report. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Just for point of order, it's public hearings. We've opened that. The public hearing is completely open now. I just wanna point that out, but do you have questions?
Is, when they have three stories?
Oh.
No, I think it's two.
It's two. So, Chief is good with three stories with fire engines, all of that. That's not really the issue.
Well, I mean, we will have site plan review, and he will get a chance to speak to any concerns he may have about circulation, fire hydrant location, and, you know, and density, and some of the details of the structure.
Can I, okay, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
In the details, where there's an area that says, okay, where it has the project description, and it's on page, I don't know, 86, but on there, it talks about the features they're gonna have, such as refrigerators, exhaust fans, dishwashers, disposals, and ranges with ovens. Does it mean, these units are gonna be air-conditioned?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
I think that, I believe that.
I was just curious about that, if it was a requirement given. I don't know. I was curious.
To kind of, you know, speak from a building code standpoint, there isn't a requirement in the building code to have air conditioning, but it would be pretty much impossible to sell housing without air conditioning, especially in our climate. So if they do have air conditioning, which is what we would strongly suggest, they would have to meet all of the requirements for energy efficiency, electrical code requirements, mechanical code requirements, et cetera. Hope that answers your question.
It does. I was just, it just seems like they'd have to, but...
You would think they would put that in the list also.
You would think that if they put...
Talk about refrigerators, I think we should talk about...
Exhaust fans, there, I don't know. Will this all be done in one phase?
I don't believe so. I think their intention is to phase this, and they have, I believe, 33 units that they are considering proposing for the first phase. Now, that means that, you know, at some point, if they don't meet the timing requirements, they may have to, you know, go back to site plan review, or, you know, it's on us to kind of keep the calendar current and make sure that they're on track, but this is what they've mentioned to me, is that they would wish it to be a phased project. They do have other projects in the area. I believe they have one in Kalinga, they have one in Sanger, and there's a Farmer's Field, I believe. So, they're, you know, they are active. They do plan to have onsite management, which is necessary, I think, and welcome. So that's some of the things that we look for when considering our project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Holly, mine's kind of a general question, and it's probably for Chief, Chief, Public Works, maybe even Alex, and yourself, but this project, is there any foreseen potential negative strain or impact because of this project in particular?
Are you talking about infrastructure?
Would it be infrastructure? Would it be strain on ambulance service, any of that type of stuff, sewer system, any of that? Oh, and Mr. Peters is here too, so yeah, maybe it's a good question for him as well.
When I mentioned earlier that often, not always, but often, projects have come to site plan review before they come for allocations. The timing of our ordinance requires that they apply for allocations that date certain, even hour certain, they have a deadline. And sometimes, they're not quite ready to go to site plan review at that time. You know, there will be everybody at the table there, the Fire Chief, the, you know, S K F will be there, Dave Peters will be heavily involved in reviewing this project as well as A.J., so it's a collective effort.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a question. Holly, senior living in Kingsburg, is usually considered 55 and over?
I believe this is a, I think it's, I think it's 65, but I'm not...
This one says 65, that I was looking for.
Certain about this particular application. The applicant was going to be on tonight, and it's not, but if you wish to be to find out the answer to what they're proposing, I will certainly do that and get back to you.
That's fine. Thank you.
Since I'm a senior, I sort of forget where they draw the line. I know there's a Denny's breakfast I can get for cheap. Oh, there, thank you. 62. There you go.
62. Thank you. Perfect.
And they can get Denny's too.
Yeah.
I have a few questions. I just wanna confirm that 25 total applications for 99 apartments.
Yes. If you look at the section that covers senior housing allocations, it's calculated a little differently. They basically give credit for amenities, and so the allocation becomes not so much one-to-one, but it, you know, becomes half, and then it becomes quarter, and that's where they were when we assessed their amenities.
So this company that's putting this on, have you been to any of their other locations and seen them walk the sites or anything like that?
I have not, but that's a good recommendation. I did, when they first came to us, I was not familiar with them, and I reached out to all the planners I knew in those jurisdictions to ask them how they were to work with, and, you know, how the project was going, and I heard all good things, but I think it would be good to have a field trip, especially as we get into the site plan review stage, to see what it really looks like on the ground.
And I think that kind of brings me to my next point, is the site plan reviews, and, you know, like you've said yourself, with these things, especially with high-density housing, the devil is absolutely in the details with this. So how long is it before we have the details? I wanna make an informed decision on this, but I wanna know more about what is their green space? What are their roadways gonna look like? What are their street lamps looking like? Those types of things. How long is it before we know what this is actually gonna be?
Well, they will submit, they sent me a site plan actually this week, and their revised site plan. They got a little feedback from us initially about the size of the project, and they came back with that. We haven't had a chance to review it at site plan review, but those are the, that's the time where we look at, you know, going from their project description, conceptual, to what they put on paper. And, you know, you will probably see this, even though Planning Commission does a planned unit development, I am pretty certain that you're gonna have to sign some sort of development agreement that will come to you, so you will be able to review it at that time. And you can always ask individual questions along the way, if you want to know how the project's going and what it looks like. It may even be a big enough project where we would dedicate a portion of the website page under planning for people who are interested and want to follow it.
Because I was, and I apologize for my ignorance on it, I kind of wanted an escape clause for us at a certain point. My fear is that they're gonna come in, and their site plans are not gonna be what we want them to be. And what happens if we give these allocations, they come in, and it doesn't look like it's supposed to look, their green space doesn't look like it's supposed to, their streetlights are not what we would normally have, all that. I don't wanna run into that same issue and kind of change that standard. So what is our repercussions if those things start happening?
Allocations will expire after a given period of time. We do not, just because they have allocations, does not get them to go, and does not get them to the starting line. It is just the beginning. And, you know, the way we look at the, you know, I think the real analysis comes in the site plan review process, and they can be at that for a long time until we are satisfied with what they're offering in terms of amenities, in terms of infrastructure improvements, open space, private space, and what the units may look like themselves, so.
And that's one of the things, I would hope that at some point, once those things are getting closer to the end, I would like to be able to see them as council again, especially, you know, we don't wanna do that with every project, and I get that, but with a project this size, where we're talking about 100, I would like an opportunity at some point to be able to see that again once we get those details. Is there a mechanism for that?
I will defer to the city attorney, if he's comfortable recommending what that might, what that action might look like, in terms of what is required at the entitlement, or what can just be optional. Do you have any thoughts on that? I put you on the spot there.
No, if it comes, if it's coming as a P U D, so it would go to the Planning Commission. So it would not come to the council unless there was an appeal of the P U D. So the allocations are based upon the analysis done by staff through the allocation process in determining whether or not allocations are available, and whether or not the project complies with the ranking process that they go through. So the only issue that you would have would be to rely upon staff as it goes through the site plan review process. And if, you know, you have comments to staff now with regards to that, you could make that known to them, but so that they are aware of concerns that you may have with regards to the amenities or what the project may look like. We always have to remember that so long as the applicant satisfies all the requirements set forth in the municipal code and the related requirements in the government code and those sorts of things, that, you know, we have to proceed with the project. So a lot of it, as you talked about, has to deal with amenities and, you know, green space, and what we, as a city, require through the municipal code as to those aspects of the project.
I think the good news for us is we've done several senior housing projects in the last decade, and so we have lessons learned to draw from, and, you know, every site's different, and some of them are handled a little differently in terms of offering open space versus, you know, continuity, or, you know, I think the other positive thing about this project is the location is really conducive to walkability, and for seniors, even in this climate, you know, it is possible for them to go grocery shopping and, you know, hopefully catch a bus, and, you know, enjoy that location, what it offers.
I think you have a better understanding of it now. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I have two questions. So would that leave us with only 10 more allocations if anybody else comes to us? Because there's 35 per year, correct?
There are, for multifamily, there are 35, so they've taken 25, yes, so 10 for 2024, but this sort of closes, unless, I've got, I misunderstand this, does this close the 2024 allocation process? So there will be new allocations available in the fall at your regularly scheduled time to consider whether or not you wish to open that opportunity. And at that point, you know, it reloads, I guess, kind of like a debit card or something.
The second question is, I wanna make sure that we have the need for more senior housing. We have two large facilities right now, so I'm wondering, is our newest one full, or is there a waiting list? Because if we give these allocations, and then somebody comes to us where we need multifamily housing for like apartments for younger families...
You mean market rate?
And we've already given out our allocations, I would be concerned if we're gonna have something that's not gonna be filled.
Well, again, I think anybody who would come with a multifamily project, and we get inquiries all the time, you know, they know, they've got to go through a process, and there's a period of time where there's a conversation back and forth about suitability of location, and what their business model is, and, you know, it's really up to the, it's really up to the developer to do a market analysis, and that is sometimes what you can require, but we assume that, you know, they have sharpened their pencils and run their numbers, and that they feel that there's a demand and a need here, so.
So do we know if Lanier is filled?
I believe it is. I don't know that, but that's what I've heard. I could certainly check on that for you and find out, but I think we've...
I think if they're grand opening, they said that they were...
I think they were full right away.
I know Monique, the manager there, and I spoke with her recently, and there's a waiting list.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a waiting list at Lanier, and I think also at Marion, at both of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then it's a need.
That's a good question.
That's a good question, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Any other questions from council? Okay, do we have any public comment on this? We'll have it open for any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Continue council discussion if there's anything else from councilors staff. Okay, then we will close the public hearing regarding this matter, and we will look at possible actions on this. I believe the action in front of us is to adopt the resolution 2024-029. We'll entertain those motions. Oh, I apologize. 2024-028.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution passes. Thank you. Now we will move on to our second public hearing of the night, which is the Public Works Fire Department and Community Development Master Fee Schedule Staff Report prepared by City Manager Alex Henderson, and we will open this public hearing and have the presentation by City Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Each of your staff reviews the existing master fee schedule to determine if changes are needed to ensure services provided are being adequately funded by the appropriate parties, and taxpayers are not responsible for funding or subsidizing activities that are often development-driven. Such fees shall in no case exceed the actual cost of providing the service in compliance with the California Constitution. So tonight, we just have a couple of items for your consideration. Most of them we view as housekeeping or annual adjustments that are made at this time of the year so that they can go into effect on July 1st of the new fiscal year. Starting with the ambulance and fire department, we're proposing to separate the fire incident reports and the fire investigation photos to better reflect the cost of providing those. There is a change to the Fire Med membership fee, which hasn't changed since 2013, it's going from $65 to $75, and I believe that's being driven by the other communities as well, because we're in a partnership with that. And then the ambulance fee itself, so the amount that we charge for certain rides has been proposed to be raised 3.6%, which reflects the April 2024, 12 months ended, Los Angeles, Long Beach CPI. Any questions on the ambulance and fire department before I move on to the next one? The next one is the Community Development Department. This is really just a cleanup item where we're eliminating the consideration of the home occupation fee, which is currently $200. There is not usually a hearing for this. It only becomes a hearing if there's an actual appeal, and we already have an appeal fee, so we're just recommending the removal of that fee. And then finally, Public Works, if you recall, council approved the Prop 218 rate structure increase in 2022 regarding the solid waste rates, so we're recommending an increase of up to 5.5% to be determined based upon what the CPI number is in June. We do have, the council has the ability to change this from zero percent up to 10%. And again, this, this is based upon the Prop 218 rates that were approved in 2022. And then we're proposing a new thirty-five dollar admin fee for the reissuance of encroachment permits, specifically those extensions. There are encroachment permits we receive all the time for work being done in our right-of-way, often, and there, this is really just to recoup the costs of city staff time to have to examine them and then reissue them based upon those extensions. So that concludes my report. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, and there are other staff members here tonight that can answer more specific questions as well.
Thank you. Do we have any council discussion on this?
For clarity, Alex, the CPI based on the Los Angeles and the Long Beach model, is there a northern model for CPI also? And can you just share how you come about, like, the north, using the north CPI versus the south CPI?
There, yes, there is, there's a Bay Area one. And so historically, for the ambulance rate, we've used that one because it has been a little bit more reflective of our area. The Bay Area rate one is usually much higher. And so that's just been precedent, because there's not a Fresno area CPI that we can use. So we've just tried to use the one that we thought was most reflective of our market.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Other council discussion?
The, the ambulance fee, that's in connection with other cities. Do they charge the same rate, I mean, right? My, isn't that, Dinuba has that, I mean, or is it just a Kingsburg?
You're, you're referencing the Fire Med program?
Oh, I'm Brezbrin, I'm sorry.
That's the one that we do. It's Dinuba, Selma, us, right? That's the, that's the one you can sign up for. It's, it has historically been sixty-five dollars a year. And then if you have to call for an ambulance, it covers your, your cost. So that's the one that, you know, we're in partnership with other communities.
And that's the one that's not, yes. Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
I have a question. Alex, is there an admin fee right now for extension on permits?
There's not a fee right now for the extension. So it would be, that's as a new fee.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Open up for a public comment if anybody has any questions or comments about the master fee schedule. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Is there any other council discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing on that and look at possible action of adopting resolution 2024-029, the master fee schedule. Entertain motions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 6.3, the contract for animal sheltering and services with the city of Selma. Staff report prepared by Assistant City Manager Christina Windover.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. And also I wanted to mention that we have Selma staff present as well. So I will just jump right into my staff report. Chief Dadian, Public Works Director Daniel Galvez, City Manager Alex Henderson, and myself. We've been working on an agreement with the city of Selma for animal control services since second chance animal shelter services were terminated at the end of 2023. Selma's city council approved an agreement between the city of Selma, or a proposed agreement between the city of Selma and the city of Kingsburg for the provision of animal control services during their meeting on Monday, May 6, 2004. Both Selma city attorney and Kingsburg city attorney have reviewed the proposed agreement. And this agreement has also been brought to the finance committee on May 7, 2024, for recommendation to council. Both parties have agreed on an agreement effective July 1, 2024, through the end of the year, December 31, 2024, unless terminated sooner. It may automatically renew up to four additional one-year terms upon mutual written consent from both parties. And it's subject to review of operating costs. Additional details that we have worked out between both parties include an annual cost of $60,000. That's to cover the expenses that Selma will incur in terms of wages, liability, salaries, benefits, other fixed costs associated with running the program, as well as less any applicable revenue that they generate from housing any Kingsburg animals. The agreement and cost will include two community events per year, ideally. That would be for microchipping services, licensing, vaccination, et cetera, contingent upon finding a veterinary provider to fulfill those services. And that's also included in the scope of work that's included in your package. Kingsburg will adopt an ordinance to mimic Selma's animal control ordinance. And city attorney Mike Nolan is in the process of reviewing that to bring back to council for a later time. And then we also will work on internal procedures and training for Kingsburg and Selma staff. And Selma Animal Services will also work on the adoption, foster, care, and outreach services for any animals they pick up, or any animals that are dropped off from Kingsburg. If the agreement is approved, the staff will continue to educate the community on our animal control services. We are still in the process of determining fee or a cost for the city's reliance on Selma for animal control for this year so far, and we'll follow up once we have that number. We are proposing a per-animal fee due to, last I heard, there were nine animals this year who have been taken from Kingsburg to Selma and housed, sheltered in Selma. So we'll work on that number as well, that's separate from this contract. And as I mentioned, we have Selma staff, Terry Rockhold as the Selma Animal Services Director, the Selma Chief of Police Rudy Alcaraz. And then, of course, we have Chief Dadian and Public Works Director Daniel Galvez to answer specific questions that the council may have. We are recommending that council approve the agreement and scope of work or services between the city of Selma and Kingsburg tonight. Just as some background information, we did reach out to other animal sheltering services and providers. And Selman, working with Selma, has seemingly been the best option for the city of Kingsburg. So I'm happy to answer any questions or turn the mic over to anyone else if staff would like to add anything.
Do we have any questions from council?
I, I would like clarification on exactly what our process is with animals. It's my understanding from this that a resident cannot drop an animal off in Selma. And so given that, I'd like to know clearly what our process is if an animal is found by a resident.
I can take that. I think it depends upon the situation, time of the day, you know, the condition of the animal. So you're correct in that residents can no longer drop off animals at the actual facility. So if it's during regular business hours, whether they're, they can contact the, the non-emergency number or someone at City Hall, if they are able to transport the animal, they can take it to City Yard. And it will be held in our kennels there or be transferred at that point to Selma after we make contact there. If it's after hours, then they're going to have to contact the, again, the non-emergent, or the non-emergency number, police dispatch. Police will go out, and if they get the dog, they can take it to the kennels. And then that animal will most likely be transported the next day to, to Selma. If there's a, if it's a, an animal that needs veterinary care, we've now established a 24-hour, or a contact with 24-hour vet in Fresno. And so that, again, will be triaged by the officer that's responding to the call.
Thank you.
Questions?
Christina, when you mentioned that there will be training for Kingsburg and Selma staff together, will that include the officers?
I don't know if the training will be joint training, but yes, the purpose would be to make sure all staff knows what the internal procedures are for dealing with the calls. We also discussed safety training as it relates to working with dogs, potentially any kind of microchip training to use a microchip checker, I don't know what it's called, and things of that nature.
Thank you.
On that note, it says here, provide basic training, catch-pull skills. So none of our officers, say there's a vicious dog, none of our officers, none of our officers will be trained with catch-pull skills?
Uh, chief?
Or not?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so a couple of things. Answer your question in just a moment. But we're, as soon as council decides, we'll establish a protocol for the officers so that it conforms to the agreement. And, you know, they're, and then we'll train them on the protocol and how to respond to various situations. There's always going to be variables and judgment, of course. Answer your question specifically, whether that happens with Selma animal control or not, that's also on my radar to find us a, a training provider for that, because that's important for us. Because, well, obviously, we have to do that. We want to do it safely for the care of the animal, the citizens, and our staff. So one way or the other, we're going to get it.
Okay, thank you.
Christina, maybe this is, maybe a question for you, or maybe even Selma. So the, the 60,000, there's, it's not per animal. It's a flat fee no matter how many animals. It could be one, or it could be many animals in a year. Is that, do I understand that right? There's no per head animal fee?
Correct. We, Selma and the city of Kingsburg looked at the average cost of animals, staff time, the cost of vaccines, and oftentimes medical procedures, things like that. So the $60,000 is kind of a rough estimate of what we've agreed upon between the two cities. We've discussed that perhaps that number will need to be renegotiated at a later point. But for now, that is the, the annual fee for however many dogs are sent to Selma. Unless, again, we need to renegotiate.
Yeah, because I, I remember when we toured Second Chance, it was like they, they need food, they need supplies, they need all those things. So the 60,000 is not to exceed number to be negotiated at a, at a later date for future years? Is that how it's planned?
Um, well, the number is proposed for until the end of this year. And so we can reevaluate if either party decides that we need to reevaluate as we get closer to the end of the year. I don't remember, Alex, maybe you know, if we did a 60-day or a 30-day written notice to the other party in the event that we need to renegotiate any of the financial terms of the policy?
Uh, there's a 90-day stipulation in Section 12 of the annual cost of the services. So, I mean, the big, the big issue for both sides, really, I mean, we, we had numbers from Second Chance that we provided to Selma based upon their reports. And so I think there was some mutual agreement on both sides that, based upon the previous three or four years of actual dogs received by Second Chance, that this was kind of an average number of animals that were, were going there. So we settled on that amount with the ability to review it based upon actuals, you know, within the first year of the contract. That's, that was the intent of both sides.
Transport for the animals would still, from Kingsburg to Selma, would still fall on our jurisdiction?
That's, yes, that's our responsibility.
Thank you.
I have another question. It might be for Selma. It's under Exhibit A. Abby, can you pull up Exhibit A? So when I'm reading A.2, it says that Selma will provide food, water, shelter, emergency routine, preventative medical care evaluations of animals' health treatment, and conditions once accepted. But the emergency medical care needs for the animals are going to be on Kingsburg prior to the admittance to Selma. So we're responsible for that, and I heard you mentioned that there's a 24-hour vet. But then I'm wondering about 5.5 on here. So if you're receiving animals that are healthy, when would you need to euthanize them? What is the policy? Who determines that if all the medical needs have been met prior to them accepting the animal?
Welcome, chief. You can just introduce yourself for those that don't know you.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rudy Alcaraz, Chief of Police for the city of Selma. So that's a great question, Councilmember North. We really try not to euthanize animals, especially healthy animals. There's so many factors that are going to go into the decision-making when we get to that point, if, if that is something that we have to entertain. I can tell you that we've hired some of the best staff in Fresno County with regard to animal services, a staff that are able to bridge the gap between animal control and animal care. That's very difficult and delicate, kind of two worlds to bring together under one umbrella. That said, we, our staff right now has been extremely successful in adopting dogs out, getting them rehomed with their owners. So to this point, we've been extremely fortunate on that to euthanize. But there, there are a lot of factors that will go into that option, right? Health of these animals could change due to circumstances, due to, you know, they might be healthy one day, kind of like any human, right? You're healthy one day, and then two days later, you're, you're sick as a, for lack of a better term, sick, sick as a dog, right? Population, just so many different factors that will kind of play into that, that option. But that is, one of the options is absolutely an extremely last resort and one we hope not to use.
I heard you mention population. So the concern that I might have is, I don't know how many other cities you're entering into contracts. So I've seen on social media the attempts that your staff has made to adopt or reunite these, these animals with their families, and it's amazing. And I think they're doing a great job. But if the population increases from Kingsburg, are animals going there, and maybe other towns also? I would worry about the weight on the staff to still have the same success. And with you mentioning population, I would wonder, like, if that would cause more euthanizing?
Ms. North, you're, you're absolutely correct. Right now, currently, and, and I'll just give you a little back history. I was tasked with researching animal services in September of '23 and looking at different options because at that moment in time, the city of Selma, or at least the Selma City Council, was kind of looking into their contract with Second Chance Animal Shelter. And, you know, I have nothing bad to say about Second Chance Animal Shelter. But I will say that throughout the state, the nation, animal care service, or at least animal control and animal services. care service, or at least animal control and animal services, and caring for animals is, is a problem that is extremely impacted throughout our nation. And there's a lot of things that play into that, right? Veterinary shortages, unfortunately, just irresponsible pet owners. We had a situation today where we had an irresponsible pet owner, and we had to make some tough decisions with regards to, you know, trying to get those animals reconnected back with the property, uh, pet owners. But what I'll say is that, in my research, I think a lot of our cities are in the same situation, and we feel that, at least in the City of Selma, that taking a regional approach might be more successful for not just us, but all of our communities. And I know that in December, I spoke, speaking with Chief Dade, and, and he was just as concerned as I was as how we were gonna continue providing animal services to both of our communities, and to, to upstart this program was extremely expensive, and, which is why we came up with an average price, because we really have no true accounting, we really didn't have good records from Second Chance. So, we really kind of had to really look at what an per-animal cost was, because, like anything, like the roads that we drive on, everyone sees the road, they don't see the infrastructure that goes underneath to make that road successful, right? And, and with animal services, picking up a dog is, is quite, quite simple. It's caring for the animal afterwards, once we take it into our possession, you know, to, to ensure that we can keep that animal healthy, keep his behavior acceptable to get him adopted out. Behavior and temperament of these animals is also a condition that we kind of use to calculate, you know, how we, how we reunite that dog with its owner, or get it adopted out, and, and again, another option. So, you know, it, it is something that we're constantly, I think, weekly, looking at, you know, where we're at, how we're placing the population, are we able to accept more? So, those are difficult questions to answer. I, I don't have a magic ball, and I can't tell you, hey, this is, this is what the population should be on a daily basis, and, and this is exactly what we'll do. 'Cause I, I don't wanna say, this population, this is what we're gonna do. I think that'd be irresponsible, and, because every day, circumstances change, right? So, you know, we could have someone, one day, come in and adopt five, five dogs from five different families, right? That absolutely impacts our population, so we, we really try to, any animal that comes in, that is healthy and has great temperament, we really try to hold on to that animal and get them adopted out. The, the great thing about our staff is that they have an invaluable relationship and networks with rescues to get them adopted out, not just regionally, but beyond the region, state, and nationally, to get, to get those animals adopted out. I would also say, like, and you mentioned, Ms. North, that they do a phenomenal job in outreach, and using social media and every other forums they can to get these dogs out. So, I'm extremely happy with the work they've shown us so far, and I expect nothing less, and that's just in the first six months. I, I expect great things in the future. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Chief, real quick, how many animals are they capable of holding there at any given time?
I think we're currently at about 45, plus or minus, keep in mind, we're still fixing the site and, and getting it up to speed. We are looking at a, I think it was a grant from UC Davis, to enhance our current kennel system, to be able to allow more animals in. And the animals that we do have, we're much more efficient with our time in cleaning, caring for those animals. So, I, I will tell you, just on a side note, this puts you at ease, I remember when I first went to Second Chance, and I, I just park, and all of a sudden, there's just like this ruckus of dogs barking. Now, I can walk into the office and almost hear no dogs barking, because of the care that's being provided to those animals. They're getting out, they're getting walked twice a day, they're being fed, they're, they're getting love and care that they desperately need, which is gonna help with their temperament and health to get them adopted out, and we have a successful resolution for those animals.
Thank you, Chief. Other council comments? Do we have any members from the public that would like to speak with us? Okay, bring it back to council. The only other point that I wanted to make on this was the $60,000. I, I look at that, 'cause that's a lot of money for any town, it matters, but I looked at, 'cause I hear about animal control officer, having a dedicated officer to that. So, I looked at Reedley that has one, and that's, that's about a $90,000 salary, like, one person cost. That does not include the vehicle, that does not include the facility. I don't even wanna put the chief on the spot to see how many hundreds of thousands of dollars Selma's having to pay for their own, their own center.
I, I can tell you, we just approved budget, so it's, but it's, it's 500,000.
Yeah, so, if Kingsburg was to jump into that arena, you're, you're talking about over $500,000 for the facility, plus additional costs and stuff. So, I know that, I know that that is something that comes up. I did wanna speak to how much that would actually end up costing. So, I think $60,000 is a pretty good deal for us at this point. Do we have another council discussion on this? Okay, this is an action item. The item being to recommend approval for the agreement of the animal control services between the City of Selma and the City of Kingsburg. We'll entertain motions?
Make the motion.
Give a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, all of you.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 6.4, ordinance amending various sections of Titles 15 and 17 of the Kingsburg Municipal Code related to property maintenance and appeals process and procedures. Staff report prepared by building official AJ O'Connell. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. AJ O'Connell, building official. The item before you tonight is a proposed ordinance for first reading of various amendments to the city's property maintenance code. The mayor and council in 2022 formally adopted the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, that thus took effect on January 1, 2023, and it is currently in effect and being currently enforced. During this period of time, staff has continually reviewed the code and how it can better reflect the needs and situations present within the city. It should be the intention of any property maintenance code to be a living, breathing document consistently reviewed and assessed for strengths and areas of improvement. Foremost of these proposed changes in front of you is the establishment of a clear, fair, and transparent appeals process for notices and orders issued by the code enforcement division. Staff feels that a clearly defined appeals process will be but one additional tool available to code officers in encouraging voluntary compliance by community members with our codes and standards. Currently, all appeals and notices and orders of the code enforcement division are heard by the mayor and city council, regardless of the severity of the violations being appealed. As of tonight, no appeals have been heard by the mayor and city council in the last two years. In a review of Chapter 17 of the municipal code, the procedure and structure of an appeal hearing is vague and ambiguous. It lacks clear definitions for burden of proof, evidentiary immisibility, and discovery, roles of witnesses, timeframes for decisions and noticing, amongst others. This shortcoming of process could create confusion for possible appellants, could create legal quandaries for the city council, and could give conflicting direction of codes to code officers. In consultation with the city attorney, staff is proposing that the existing Chapter 17 citation for appeals within the municipal code be revised to reference an amended property maintenance code to Chapter 107 that specifies a code violator's right to appeal. The amended code relieves the city council of the duty of hearing appeals, with the responsibility being reassigned to an independent hearing officer. Furthermore, the proposed ordinance intends to establish definitive timelines, roles within an appeal hearing of the hearing officer, city, and the appellant, and other avenues of procedures that may become necessary in adjudicating appeals. Per the proposed amendments, the hearing officer will act in a quasi-judicial role in hearing an appeal of a violator of the adopted property maintenance code. The hearing officer will hear arguments in a structured proceeding, be compelled, compelled to conduct inquiries and discovery, and issue an order, either upholding or denying an appeal. The appeal hearing provisions of the proposed ordinance establish notification requirements for both the code enforcement division and appellant, timeframes for the issuance of the order, and codification of appealing the order of the hearing officer through judicial review. The hearing officer will be appointed by the city manager and will be qualified in a background of the practice of law or local governance, particularly with regard to knowledge of property maintenance. The hearing officer shall not be an employee of the city, or a member of any board or commission of the City of Kingsburg. This proposed process is modeled after the cities of Reedley, Visalia, Tulare, and Fresno. Staff actively sought their assistance in developing the language for the adopting ordinance and their suggestions for conducting fair and transparent hearings. It should be noted that the City of Kingsburg has already established a similar hearing officer form of appeals in regards to animal nuisances and abandoned vehicles. Chapter 6 and 10 of the municipal code lay out similar hearing procedures for these specific violations only. The proposed amendments would not alter these sections of the municipal code. However, their construct was used as a template to draft the adopting ordinance. It should also be noted that the mayor and city council will still retain the role of arbiter for appeals of interpretation of the building official for building codes and standards, and abatement, and, and abatement of unsafe structures. Provisions for these are codified in Title 20, Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations and California Health and Safety Code, and are not affected by adoption, the adoption of this ordinance. The additional, additional recommended amendments pertain to inoperable vehicles, definitions of noxious weeds and grasses, mold remediation, and defacement of property. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed ordinance as presented. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any, do we have any public comment on this? Do we have council discussion? Questions?
I have a question. You said that the council hasn't heard any appeals in over two years?
At least since I've been in the employ.
And that's because there's been no appeals?
Um, we've, we've had some applications for appeals. Normally, what we can do is we can work directly with the appellant to resolve the issues without bringing the matter to council. Normally, I could tell you, the two instances that we have had have been simply amounts of administrative citations, and we've been able to work directly with the appellant to come up with a resolution.
Okay, and then you said, if there is, if something does go to appeal, a code violation, it would be somebody from, like, a different city? I know I said not, it's definitely not Kingsburg.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be somebody that would be within the employ, it wouldn't be anybody that would have, be part of the board of, you know, on a board or commission. You know, I can tell you, City of Reedley, you know, I think that we can all agree, that's a pretty robust and successful code enforcement division over there. They have, right now, their hearing officer is an 89-year-old former retired, former retired judge.
So, there might be somebody like that?
Somebody like that.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I can tell you that, you know, we've had preliminary discussions, actually, with the City of Reedley. You know, the gentleman, he's 89 years old, so they're kind of looking for a little more of a longer-term solution. And so, we've actually had preliminary discussions about possibly entering into a reciprocal agreement, where code officers from, say, the City of Reedley would provide hearing officer services to us, and then we would provide it to them. It would be, it would be an agreement like that. Again, very preliminary discussions, that would be something that, you know, with the blessing of the mayor and the council, that, you know, I would work with the city manager on.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I have a couple. This hearing officer is appointed by the city manager. Is that, that's something we pay for? We, we would pay this gentleman or lady for their services?
The intent would be for us not to pay them. If you look at the adopting ordinance, it, it's pretty specific that they would not be in the employ of the city, so even, you know, if we were to be a stipend or anything like that, it could be considered to be an, an employ situation. Again, in speaking with Reedley, the gentleman, he volunteers his time, he doesn't get, he doesn't get paid. If we were to enter into some sort of reciprocal agreement, it would just be a normal part of our, our job duties.
Yeah, this is only four years from now, council, we've never heard one. Maybe some of our more veteran council, have you guys ever had one? Since you've been here, city manager, have, are you aware of any?
Council's heard some appeals. I don't know that any of the code enforcement ones have, like, as AJ mentioned, there's been a handful that we've gotten to a certain point, but we've been able to mitigate it before it comes before council.
So, so I guess my, my question, and I'm trying to think of a better way to say it, but is why, why would we do this if we don't ever have these come through here? What's the, what's the purpose if they never come to council? Why are we doing this?
Um, you know, it, it streamlines our, our appeals process for violations of the property maintenance code with other, other public nuisances that are identified within our municipal code. It sort of brings those that are, that are in line. It's consistent with other jurisdictions. And then also, you know, we wanted to make sure that the appeals process was going to be a little bit more structured, have some, you know, have really good transparency, and, you know, it was staff's, it was staff's belief in creating the, in creating the adopting ordinance, that having an independent, unbiased, outside hearing officer could render a judgment on an appeal in a manner that would essentially be unquestioned when it comes to potential biases, conflicts of interest. We live in a, we live in a very, very small community, everybody knows each other, and this would allow for an order to be written that would essentially be, you know, uncontested, uncontested and unquestioned. Independent, unbiased, clear, transparent.
Okay, I get that. I understand that. I would say that my only, my only concern with that would be, it's not somebody from Kingsburg, it's not somebody who knows Kingsburg, it's not somebody who knows how things are for us. We lose that little bit of control that I don't, I don't love, if that ever came up as a big issue. I know that the rules are the rules, they're black and white most of the time, but I think that's when it comes all the way to us, that, that gives us a little bit of wiggle room, if we feel that it's necessary, where things have changed. But that's why I, you know, not trying to be rude about it, I was just trying to, curious as far as why we were looking at this now. Thank you. Do we have any other council discussions? No? Okay, this, this is an action item. If someone would want, we could entertain motions to, this is to waive the hearing, I believe?
Yes, we're ready to waive the reading, pass for a second.
Okay. We'll entertain motions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will oppose this. So, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.5, the 2425 City Manager's Recommended Budget Introduction, prepared by City Manager Alex Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In accordance with the city charter, pleased to introduce the City Manager's Recommended Fiscal Year 2024, 2025 Operating Capital Improvement Budget. This is our most important policy document that you, you adopt each year. It's based upon the strategic planning principles, as adopted by council, which are preserve the Kingsburg experience, good picture, by the way. Financial stability, support businesses, community engagement, and community safety. The fiscal year 2025 all funds budget is $29,483,169, which is a 4.3% decrease from the current fiscal year, and also includes capital improvement projects as well. So, just to get started, I'm gonna go through sort of our current year, give some updates there, and then I'll, I'll dive into next year as well, but please feel free to interrupt, ask questions along the way. So, just briefly, just going over our general fund, our, our largest fund, end of year revenue projections, we did see some property tax growth. I think normal growth was a little under 3% for this year, but we saw a little bit more, obviously, 'cause we have some new housing starts that came online. Our sales tax numbers are down, both Bradley Burns and Measure E. You know, speculation or sort of thought process, just, just from a nationwide perspective, is that there was a lot of sort of pent-up demand coming out of the pandemic, a lot of... a lot of money that got infused into the economy. So you saw people sort of, uh, you know, spending a lot of that, uh, income, and, and so now that's maybe, uh, tailing off a little bit and maybe less so of, uh, you know, signs of a potential recession, but maybe just a sort of a normalizing, uh, of actual spending. And so we're seeing that, uh, in both, uh, in both forms of our, of our sales tax collections as well. Um, uh, for the most part, our, our revenues are trending sort of in line right now, as we projected, uh, roughly a year ago. Uh, it looks like a small, uh, surplus of over expenditures, um, is what we're projecting through the end of the, the end of this year. Uh, on the right-hand side there, you can see some of the, uh, trends I've talked about. Our building permit fees, uh, have been consistent but are a little bit lower overall just because some of the larger things like, uh, new single-family starts are lower just because some of those subdivisions, uh, have been completed. And I'll talk a little bit later about the community facilities districts as well, uh, which the council will consider, uh, the new levy, uh, at their June nineteenth meeting. Uh, so just a couple of things I like to highlight as far as our general fund in terms of expenditures. Uh, so there is a, a, an amount that we transfer, uh, for fire and ambulance out of there, and there's also roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're currently paying to Fresno County as part of our transition agreement, uh, from the sun made annexation. Uh, this was year nine. Uh, next year will be the final year, uh, that we make that payment. Uh, most of the other items, uh, generally in line with, uh, what was anticipated. Um, you know, some, uh, wages, uh, higher than the previous year just because of, uh, minimum wage increases, and we'll continue to see that, uh, since it's tied to CPI in California now. Uh, significant capital projects are completed this year. We've kind of talked about that at different times, uh, so we're, we're winding some of those down right now. Obviously, there's the waterline work that's occurring on Draper Street right now. Some of that stuff will actually bleed into the new fiscal year, uh, as we take on streets projects. Um, we'll talk about that a little bit later as well. So, uh, we talked a little bit about rec funds, so which is our senior center and our pool. Um, they are actually subsets of the general fund, but we show them separately in the budget so that you can see how they are operated individually. So there is a, a subsidy there, or what we show as a transfer, uh, that goes to each of those. Uh, our big costs is, are obviously, uh, staff-related, uh, but there are some, uh, you know, supply, um, you know, increases that we've seen as well, including chemical costs at the pool. Um, and then we do, uh, recoup, uh, a portion, or fifty percent of those, uh, through our JPA, uh, with the high school. Enterprise funds, we operate, uh, operate three different enterprise funds, our water, solid waste, and our ambulance and, uh, fire fund. Uh, water sales, uh, basically where we anticipate them to be. Uh, a lot of that's dependent upon weather, um, you know, if it's a, if it's a dry, uh, if it's dry winter or drier winter, you see, uh, more consumption. Um, uh, tell people often that, um, our usage in July is about three times as much as it is in January, and, uh, our population doesn't grow by three times, right? So it's just really based upon outdoor watering, um, you know, under weather, uh, people are, are, are watering their landscape. Uh, passed a solid waste rate, uh, increase, uh, you know, it was year three of that five year increase earlier this evening, uh, so that fund is, is working its way towards solvency after those changes were made. Uh, and, uh, we average about eight hundred dollars in ambulance run, um, regardless of what we charge, uh, that's just the sort of where our averages are at, uh, right now. But we do, um, we do continue to participate in IGT and now the new PPG EMT program, uh, to, um, help supplement, uh, those, those, uh, I guess I'd call them lost revenues or uncollectibles. Um, uh, most of the expenditures that you see there are based upon, uh, at least in the water fund, uh, some of the higher ones are based upon our capital projects. Uh, we also have funding in there for our GSA contribution, um, and then, uh, ambulance and fire, uh, some higher OT expenditures were due to a wildland fire activity sort of last summer, and we get, those get reimbursed through OES. Uh, we have, uh, two, uh, what we call special revenue funds. Uh, big ones are, uh, local transportation dollars, so gas tax, uh, measure C, uh, and then obviously Measure E, uh, we consider a special revenue fund, uh, which is, is for public safety. Uh, you can see on the right-hand side there, some of the projects that we have done in twenty, twenty-four, uh, this really focuses more on the transportation side of it. Um, you know, we did the Eighteenth Avenue sidewalk and then, uh, individual road projects, um, that are winding down for this year, and we'll, uh, actually, next week, we will start, uh, the fiscal year twenty-five projects, uh, but they'll get done, uh, in this summer. So just the way that the fiscal year falls, uh, and how we pay that out, but we're always doing projects basically every single summer as it relates to road projects. So this year is fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, uh, are the three, uh, big ones. But then we'll also be doing Draper Street after the water, uh, project is completed. Uh, so just some, uh, quick highlights, obviously, we updated, uh, we did our five-year strategic plan update, um, uh, received the, the distinguished budget award again. Um, we do have seen a, a lot of activity in our economic, uh, development incentive programs, so that's good to see, including more of the sales tax rebates and, uh, property tax rebates. Um, and, uh, obviously, we completed the fiber, uh, construction, um, and then just some other examples of some of the projects that, uh, that we've done throughout the last year. Any questions on twenty-three, twenty-four before I move on to the upcoming year? Okay, uh, so for fiscal year twenty-five, these are, uh, go, um, sort of our major general fund, uh, revenue sources, so those are our Bradley Burn sales tax, our TOT, uh, which is the, the twelve percent that we charge, uh, hotels, including Airbnbs, uh, building permitting and licensing, motor vehicle license fee, which is a subset of property taxes, essentially, uh, franchise fees, non-recurring property taxes, and then, uh, you know, property taxes. Uh, so here's, uh, our projections for the coming year. A little bit, uh, last year I was here, uh, sales tax had actually outpaced property tax, uh, because of the decline in sales tax and because of some of the additions, obviously, from adding some new houses, that's, that's changed again. So property tax, uh, is again our, our highest revenue source for the general fund. Everything else pretty, uh, I guess, uh, similar to projections for twenty-four, uh, from, from this fiscal year, um, so, uh, basically in line, and, and those percentages are, are pretty equitable to, uh, to what we've had in years past. Uh, you can see here, uh, revenues are, are pretty similar from year to year, that the twenty, twenty-three one shows a large transfer, uh, from when we, uh, for, to help fund, uh, the portion of our fiber projects. So that's a little bit of a misnomer. It's not like we got a, a huge money, uh, dollar amount in, but we have to show that from an accounting standpoint. So, um, pretty standard, uh, pretty, pretty, uh, consistent with, in terms of revenues. Again, we are showing a little bit of a decline, a conservative estimate just based upon, uh, what we've seen, uh, recently in sales tax and other areas. And again, just a, a summary of our, our revenue and expense, um, over the last five years, including the projection for the future year. Uh, and then our, our large, uh, our expenditure forecast for the general fund, uh, not necessarily surprising, but police, uh, shows the biggest amount for that. City council and admin, admin includes, you know, myself, finance, uh, administrative services, so really, uh, most of the items at city hall. Uh, and then you can see planning, building, uh, public works, and then our portion of, of fire that comes from the general fund. Um, those are our main, uh, main expenditure categories. Um, just a couple of quick items, uh, so city council, pretty, uh, pretty standard. Uh, we, we budget for attendance at, uh, League of Cities Conference. Um, our non-departmental, so we kind of, we kind of group those things in that don't necessarily fall in other, uh, other departments, so this includes our economic development partnerships, uh, website, our communications for that. Uh, I talked a little bit about the sun made payment that we have to make, make, and then we also will put together all of our, uh, UAL costs, our PERS costs for, uh, for those relative general fund employees here. We do pull out, uh, police, uh, the police contribution is in the general fund, but we actually show it underneath the police line, um, uh, since they, they have their own, uh, basically department. Um, you know, uh, pretty status quo mostly as it relates to, uh, from a staffing perspective. Um, planning and development department talk, uh, includes funding for professional services, so, uh, you know, plan check, which is covered by some of our fees, uh, consulting service, engineering services. Again, a lot of that is driven, uh, by the actual, uh, economic activity that's occurring either through single-family subdivisions or commercial or multifamily. Um, so those services are covered by, by costs recovered, um, through the, through the fees that we charge. Uh, community services, uh, one item is, uh, we may be moving from the FM triple-A, which has been our contract to their, that's Fresno Madera, uh, agency on aging, uh, they provide our meals for us. Uh, it looks like we may get some funding from the healthcare district that could provide more hot meals, uh, once we get the kitchen online, so that, that revenue, uh, amount could change, uh, which would also impact our, our expenditures as well. But, um, sort of waiting a final word on that. Uh, again, uh, police, from police standpoint, uh, maintains, uh, our existing general fund positions. Um, we do have a large payment in there, or for our contract, uh, through Fresno County. Uh, we purchase new patrol vehicles each year. I think we're three years in arrears on some of them. We're hopeful that we'll be getting some of them here shortly. Um, and then, um, you know, we also have public works, uh, portion of landscape, uh, maintenance, vehicle maintenance, and facility maintenance, uh, that are covered under the general fund. And then all the departments, uh, regardless of fund, do pay a fair share of insurance and workers' comp. I'll talk a little about, uh, that a little bit later, just to try and give you some perspective on how that has changed over the last four or five years. Again, rec funds are senior and, uh, uh, pool. Um, a big change there, I would say, just from a revenue side, is that we have a, a partnership now with the elementary district to provide, uh, a number of swim lessons, so that's been an influx of revenue, um, just to, um, you know, provide that service for, for kids in that program. So that, that's a, a good partnership that we have. Um, and then, uh, again, depending upon what happens with the healthcare district, uh, that, that revenue may change, um, uh, and be replaced by, by the healthcare district from FM triple-A. Again, talking about special revenue funds and focusing here mostly on, uh, on the transportation, transportation side, so some of these funds do, uh, uh, help with, uh, the employment of a couple of public work street employees. Um, one thing I do want to point out, as we, we'll start to talk about this, probably hear about this more, as they start to re, re, uh, uh, try again for measure C. So measure C is about a little over half a million dollars for Kingsburg each year, so some significant dollars that if it doesn't get renewed, and certainly they have some, uh, work to do with regards to that outreach and, uh, making sure that there's more support for it, but the actual financial impact to us is, you know, between half, you know, about five to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and we, we use all those funds, so gas tax, local transportation funds, and measure C to do sidewalk work, to, uh, help offset some of our costs for like street light, uh, costs that, um, you know, we have to pay for, um, and then obviously the larger pavement projects and, um, just regular maintenance that we're doing on our streets, um, that, that come up throughout the year. Uh, again, here's a, just, then just talk a little bit about Measure E. Um, you can see that our revenue is projected down, uh, from last year, um, and you can see the FTEs, uh, these were, this was summarized in the reports that were given by both the chiefs, uh, one of our last meetings. Uh, as Chief Dadian mentioned last time, there was one, uh, position that was a police officer position that was eliminated for this year because the funding came in less. It was someone who, it, you know, the position had left, so we didn't, you know, we just didn't refill it, um, but I did want to note that, so that's just the impact of not having, um, those revenues come in, uh, as anticipated. Um, we will, uh, there is a portion of Measure E that will pay for the, uh, the engine, the new engine that's coming, which I think we're anticipating, uh, in the first part of the new fiscal year, um, but then also some other capital projects, uh, and I know, again, both the chiefs kind of touched on this, and, uh, the, um, the Measure E oversight committee did, uh, affirm compliance as required by the, by the ballot measure, uh, during their meeting on May fourteenth. From the enterprise funds, again, uh, probably the big, uh, items are, uh, our GSA contribution in the water department, um, uh, looking to do a rate study, as we've talked about. Uh, last time we did a rate study for water was, uh, twenty thirteen, um, and then just continuing with those capital projects to improve fire flows and make sure that, that we have proper system redundancy. And we do continue, uh, some funding for our turf, turf replacement program, uh, to promote conservation, both for the city and, and for, uh, residents. Couple other expenditure items, uh, for solid waste, uh, again, uh, a rate increase, uh, based upon the, the June CPI. Um, you know, most of the solid waste things are, are passed through, you know, we, we pay contractors, right? So we have a contract with Mid Valley Disposal, we have a contract with our street sweeping service that, uh, that, um, so we're collecting those dollars and then paying them for that service, and then, uh, a portion of it is going to help offset the costs for some of the employees upfront who do, you know, utility billing, and their biggest items are mostly solid waste and, uh, water related as it relates to, you know, taking payments and, uh, working with customers. And then ambulance and fire, uh, just working through, um, PERS and workers' compensation increases, um, and then, um, uh, we did make a change this year just to show sort of our net cash received. We were having some difficulty, we used to show gross, and then we would show write-offs, uh, which became difficult to track, especially if you're writing off receivables from two fiscal years ago, it makes it look like your write-off, your net number is very different. And so, uh, worked with our auditors and Chief Panaski, uh, to kind of amend that this year, and then we are participating in what is the new PPG EMT program, which helps offset some of our, um, it provides revenue to us, uh, for some of those calls for service for ambulance rides. Uh, so I want to talk a little bit about the ARPA plan, just showing some of our previous expenditures and then what's proposed for the upcoming year. Uh, we have to encumber all dollars by the end of this year, and they have to be spent by the end of twenty, twenty-six. Uh, we've completed that reporting, um, but, um, just for purposes of transparency, you can kind of see here some of the, a lot of planning, uh, what I would call, uh, sort of one-time dollars, uh, you know, one-time plans, uh, one-time expenditure, because that's what the funding is, so you're not, you're not putting it into, uh, salaries or things like that when it's not going to be replaced by future dollars. Uh, you know, so just want to talk a little bit about some of the other funds, uh, maybe not as large, but certainly, uh, just as important, so, uh, we, we collect develop, development, our developer impact fees on eligible new projects, so new single-family, new multifamily, new commercial projects. Um, you can kind of see a couple of the single-family projects that are, are in process right now. There's one right now, they're working, finalizing phase three of the cream claw tract, and then phase four, uh, they're selling lots for currently. Um, we are required to do a nexus study update every eight years, that's a new state mandate, so we're due for ours. Um, our, our last one was done in twenty sixteen, and so that's programmed into, uh, our capital project for the coming year. Finance authority talks about, uh, the, our debt obligation payments, we don't, don't have a ton of them, uh, thankfully, but we, you know, we still have some for the fire department and some of the borrowing, uh, that was done, um, over ten years ago. And then we have, uh, our landscape and lighting. Uh, we've talked about, these are sort of, they're older, we have thirteen different zones. Um, council approves a separate levy that gets collected each year, um, it only pays for exactly what it's talking about, landscape and lighting. Um, the challenge is not all of those thirteen zones have a CPI escalator, so they're still paying the same amount they were paying in the early nineties, uh, when that got put into place. Uh, but I would say, uh, one of the biggest, uh, cost increases that we have this year is our, our share of our property insurance, workers' compensation, employee assistance, our general liability, and our vehicle insurance. Um, so, uh, we pay more than double than what we paid in fiscal year twenty-one. So, we paid about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, as a city in twenty, twenty-one, and this year it's going to be about one-point-two million. So, uh, that's just reflective of, um, the market in general. Um, um, you know, we're part of, uh, of a local government pool, so we have the, the, what I would call the buying power of a lot of different communities, um, you know, reaching out to some other city managers to see if they're exploring anything, because we're all seeing, uh, a similar, uh, increase. But, I mean, obviously that has an impact on just our, our general budget and what we want to do, and you, it's important, you have to have it, you don't see it though, right? It's not necessarily people, it's not police, it's not fire, um, but it's a, a significant amount. I just want to talk a little bit about, uh, again, about the CFDs, relatively new, uh, since twenty seventeen, but still probably one of the most important things and, uh, that we've done. Um, so again, similar to landscape and lighting district, but helps us fund a more broad set of services, including police and fire. And we had a pretty, uh, direct conversation with council back in sixteen and seventeen, talking about whether or not there was a desire to continue with building alleys in Kingsburg. Um, and part of the reason for that was, is that there was not a mechanism to pay for them long-term and maintain them long-term, so this is one of the reasons why the CFDs were adopted, to make sure that that would occur. Uh, we have two different zones, so all, all of the Fresno County houses, except for the seventeen Fresno County, Fresno County houses that are associated in the Summerland Development, pay, uh, uh, that top amount, or propose to pay that top amount, the seven ninety-nine, and then, uh, the Summerland ones, uh, will pay, uh, that sixteen, twenty-three. And the reason it's so much different is because we do not collect, uh, the full, uh, property tax value, uh, on the Tulare County side, um, and so, uh, they're the ones that they actually charge. Um, Tulare County actually collects those, those funds and, and remits it to us. And so, uh, again, there's, uh, a percentage that goes to police, percentage that goes to fire, percentage that goes to parks, uh, a percentage that, uh, we put in, we're putting in deposit counts for, uh, streets and alleys, um, and then just for general fund balance, but then when we, you know, come back in ten years or something and need to do something on those streets or alleys, we, we have, we have dollars sitting there, um, so that we're not in a, a difficult position to make sure that those are being maintained.
On that number you have up there for zone two levy?
Yeah.
That hundred and sixty-four lots, twenty, from a hundred and sixty-four lots total within the CFD, that's not, that's only seventeen of those are city, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's the whole subdivision.
Right. Right.
Right. Yeah, so 164 pay that amount.
148 or whatever it is, that's Tulare County's.
Correct. And then just a list here of some of our proposed capital projects. We talked about the list previously. Council see the full amount. Hasn't varied much. I think actually we deleted a couple of them that weren't necessary. So I think there's 38 projects now for about 5.5 million. But, you know, talked a little bit about the, some of the plans that we're doing, whether that's the general plan update. So we're headed into year two of that. Some other projects, Mariposa Street Reconstruction, which is the CDVG project, our Laurel Street Dog Park. South for Bid right now. We're planning to, you know, start construction on that this summer. And then we also are going to be installing some of that new monument signage. So, you know, it's been a while, but council renamed a couple of the new parks and the new subdivisions. And so now they'll get the new signage or kind of been waiting for the Soulig One, the Phase Two, Phase Three Park to get close to completion before making those new sign orders. We talked previously about Calpers contributions. So again, just a quick refresher, we have our normal cost, which is a percentage of payroll, and then our UAL portion, which creates our total contribution for the year. And then what our lump sum payment is, is the, not the all the way far right one, but the furthest right one. That's sort of a tan color, the 742 for 12 is our contribution for this coming year, which this is across all funds. And again, this 742 number is just the UAL number. It doesn't include our normal regular costs, which are associated with our benefits. Again, what we've done is when we do have surpluses, we put them into sinking accounts that we can utilize if necessary to help avoid those big swings up and down. So obviously this year is a higher number because in fiscal year 2022, Calpers had a negative year. And so we should, we'll know what the final number is for 2023 in August. Council does also approve our financial policies each year, which are derived from generally accepted accounting principles and best practices of the GFOA. Talks about our investment policies, outlines purchasing and expenditure policy, budget amendment policy, credit cards, segregation of duties, and our fund balance reserve. And so the council affirms this each year and makes changes as necessary. There are no proposed changes for the coming year. So just a summary, again, mostly final, but there's no action on this item this evening. This is our first introduction. There will be a public hearing set for June 19th, so Wednesday in a couple of weeks. Again, we're in a good position. You know, we're monitoring some of those reductions in revenue, but cautiously optimistic. The budget is structurally balanced. We do use a portion of some of the PERS UAL dollars to help offset the big spike, as I mentioned, from the Calpers negative return. We do maintain our economic development incentive programs. And again, it's 38, actually, the CIP projects now. But that concludes my introduction, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, council discussion, questions? Let's talk for just a quick second about ARPA. What's our total number we have remaining to be encumbered by December?
So the total unspent amount, I think, is, well, if you include the, what we have proposed for 2025 is just under 1.3.
And we have to 26 to spend it.
Correct.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Is there any other questions?
Just from a reporting standpoint, we've, I mean, we've reported it as encumbered, right? Because you can, you can say it's for general salaries because it's under $10 million, but you ultimately have the ability to spend it, you know?
I have a question. You mentioned the sun made payment?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, of course. So anytime that we do an annexation of property, we have to have, we have agreements with certain jurisdictions. So we have agreements with CID, for example, so they de-annex or detach, right? And then the same thing is with the county property, you know, right now, if it's in the county, it has to be served by Fresno County Fire or Cal Fire. So there's transition agreements, essentially 10-year transition agreements that are in place that we have to pay a portion to them for those 10 years for the revenue that they're losing because we're annexing their property. Now, most annexations that we have are the annexation of former agricultural fields, right? For subdivisions or things like that. And so the amount is pretty small, because the amount that the county was getting from them was pretty small to start with, right? It might only be a few thousand dollars over the 10 years. The sun made one was different, right? Because you had sun made guardian. You had a high property value in those areas. And so they are agreements so that if we were going to do annexations, that the county will then not fight it, right? So they have these agreements essentially with all the jurisdictions. So because the sun made one included actual improved property, there was an amount that we have to pay that was approved in 2013, I think. Went into effect, I think, first in, you know, around the 2014 timeframe, 2015 timeframe, when it was finally all finalized, right? When the annexation went through. So we have to make 10-year payments and they go up by about 2% every single year, based upon that initial increment that was identified. And so we have one more year in our 10-year payment, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the public or council? Awesome. Thank you. This is informational only, so there's no action needed on this. We can move to item seven, council reports and staff communications. 7.1, Community Services Commission.
We haven't met.
7.2, Public Safety Committee.
I have not met.
7.3, Chamber of Commerce.
We meet next week.
7.4, Economic Development.
We meet tomorrow at 1:00.
7.5, Finance Committee.
Oh, sorry, we haven't met.
7.6, Planning Commission.
Have not met since our last meeting.
7.7, SKGSA.
We have not met and there will be no meeting in June.
7.8, Downtown Business Improvement District.
We met this morning, but there's nothing new to report out.
7.9, Council of Governments. We met last Thursday. I'd say the only thing, and we touched on it a little bit here, is, again, that Measure C Fund. That's very important, not just to our community, but to all of them. And that's a, it's really close to a $7 billion fund that is going to hurt every town if that doesn't pass. So we need to pay real close attention to that one. That's going to hurt a lot of our infrastructure if it doesn't pass. And COG is working to try to figure out the best path for that. So that's going to be a forever long conversation until it's completed. 710, Council Member Reports.
Hey, I have something. I've been working, I don't know if you remember, when I told you the Girl Scouts came and they said they wanted an inclusive playground for our kids. I had already been doing some research on that for our community. And I've been talking with some city staff about it and some parents of students that it would benefit, or children that it would benefit in our community, and also a developer. And so on June 17th, 7:30 to 9 o'clock in the Roosevelt Auditorium, you're all invited to attend. We're going to talk a little bit more about the needs of students. There is a tentative plan sketched out of what it would look like. Thanks to Spirit Horse, they did all of the groundwork on it and Kerry Gerke. So we have a tentative design of what they were going to use there. They did not get the funding that they were asking for to fund that playground. So it might actually benefit the whole community. We have a location of where it would possibly go in our, is it Phase Five? Phase Five over at Kings Estates. They need to put in a park there off of 18th. And so on June 17th, we want, we're going to invite the families that are in the Kingsburg Elementary School District. If they want to come learn a little bit more about our special needs department, but we're also going to just get some input on that park. And anybody listening could also attend. And Adam will also be there. And possibly Stacy, because she's on the Community Services Commission. So I just wanted to put that out there if you would also like to attend.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Just real quick, I have a, I heard a lovely comment today, and I'd like to pass along to Dave and Daniel. The construction company doing the work on Draper Street, they were very pleased with them. They've done a great job cleaning up after themselves, and downtown does. It looks, it looks great. So they're doing a great job. Thank you for that. And I would like to say thank you to everybody here for helping with the Swedish Festival. It was a really good year. I mean, my mother is the chairman. She has been for about 10 years. She's been on the Swedish Festival Committee 25 years. So I've been involved with it for a long time. And I really appreciate to my fellow council members, you guys come out, you help. You're, you know, you're in your Swedish outfits, and I really do appreciate that. I appreciate all the support you gave. And to City Hall, you guys do a great job. Alex, you do a wonderful job every year. Thank you so much. And Daniel, Public Works does a great job helping us out. So I really do appreciate all the support. I want to thank you guys.
I have a couple of things. Kingsburg Healthcare District, we had a special meeting. Vince attended as well, part of it. And they went over the 21 different grants. There is an updated schedule on the grants, apparently on their website. I haven't seen it, but they're supposed to send it to me. But there was some positives that came out of that. A few, the senior center, they funded, not 100%, but they funded a majority of what our ask was. Fire, I believe we were asking for a five-year agreement, and they tentatively offered, agreed to a three-year agreement. And so that was positive. And then, I believe Laura, I believe you were, the elementary school also got awarded, tentatively, of course, got awarded a grant. So there were some wins there. And then I just wanted to say thank you, take this time to say thank you to both our staff here in Kingsburg and the City of Selma for working together on that animal shelter. I know that you guys have been spending a lot of time on that dating back a few months now. And so thank you for pulling that together and hopefully that will fill a need in the community. And so I appreciate you guys, and that's all I have.
I have a couple of things. Want to congratulate Kingsburg High School varsity baseball team. Back-to-back Division III Valley Champions, section champions. Congratulate Coach Cranford and all the players. It was a good game. I went to the game. It was at Rawhide. I always want to say Visalia Oaks, but it's Visalia, Rawhide, yeah, Rawhide Stadium. It was a good game. They beat, they won, I think it was 5-0, 5-0, yeah. So they played a good game. On Memorial Day, I went to the cemetery to the celebration there. It was nice. Mr. Steve Nagel gave the speech, and it was a good speech, you know? So for all of our veterans that gave ultimate sacrifice. And then, SKF, we had a meeting last week and, you know, we had a public hearing for 218 procedures. And the board did vote to increase this, you know, they had a consultant and went through all the 218 procedures. And so we did vote to increase the sewer service charges. That motion did pass. That hasn't been increased, like, in five years, so it was time to do that again. That's all I have.
Thank you. All I have is we, city manager and I met with Congressman Costa last week for a lunch meeting here at Fugazi's, which was great. During that meeting, he reaffirmed that he had made a recommendation for an earmark for the police department of $600,000. That would go towards our police department for body cams and dash cams, which is great news. Great news for that project. It's a lot, that's a lot of money. It's not a guarantee, but it's a step in the right direction. And then shortly after that, we were notified that Senator Butker also made that recommendation to put it through the Senate Appropriations Committee. So we're on the path for that to happen. It's not a guarantee, but we're along that path. I think it was great. I think it was great that he came out, and he seems like he's excited about what we're doing. So I think his, his financial commitment to that shows that he's happy with us, so. I'll have a report out. 711, City Managers Report.
All right. Just briefly a reminder, it's going to be extremely hot the next couple of days. So we do have a cooling center available. Senior Center serves as our cooling center. And then we also, on days that are open, it'll start next week because the pool opens officially next week. But on days that are over 104, there's free public swimming that we provide as well. And then I know the fire department, I think, is going to be around tomorrow for both promotion and then on Thursday at the high school as well for their graduation, just to make sure no issues there. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. And before we adjourn, I just want to thank all of our chiefs and department heads for coming to the meetings. I know, I know these can run a little late sometimes, but we do appreciate you guys being here, especially for all the questions and stuff we may have out of nowhere. So we do appreciate that. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting.